Because you use the SEAF form. And you did indicate in three areas of Part Two that there is a moderate to large impact, which requires Part Three to be completed, setting forth, you know, how the applicant is going to mitigate these moderate to large impacts. At the end, you voted to send the EAF over to the county. And if it's not completed, I don't see how it gets sent to the county. My understanding is that SEAF is not the subject, is not being used for this application. It was pulled for some reason, which obviously there would need to be another one. But that's... There was also a declaration of lead agency, which I don't know if there was any other involved agencies. So if there's no other involved agencies, there's no need for a lead agency. So these are some issues. You know, I wanted to raise this to the board's attention. They are relevant. If you're moving forward tonight, despite what I said about criteria, these are issues that would have to be addressed with regard to the secret determination and how you evaluate this in terms of environmental issues. But at that point, that's my... These are my statements. If you have any questions for me, I'm welcome to... More than willing to hear. Thank you.
I want to address it. My name is Vicki Oldman.
Vicki, if you could just go towards the table so the microphone can pick you up, please? I appreciate it. Thank you.
So Kathy is a good neighbor, and she's a longtime resident in Marysburg. And I know she did a lot of service for the board, for the town. I respect that. And I also respect the property owner should have their right to do whatever they want to do on their property. I do respect that. But the thing is, I want to be a good neighbor, but I also love the town. And everyone in the house, you know, they have their value. And if people start to put some, like a garage or shed just on the empty land, there's no primary structure on the land, then that would destroy the neighborhood. And the house or the homeowners, they will lose their property, the value. So that's why I like to oppose it. Thank you.
I think I'd like to make a motion, ask for a motion to close the public hearing. And talk to me later. Is there anybody else who wants to speak? Motion to close it.
No second motion.
Is Nico going to come back now to this next? Welcome, everybody. When we call the regular meeting to order, please stand to the flag.
To the flag, the United States of America. Public stands one nation, indivisible, indivisible, justice.
Yes, sure. Thank you. The regular meeting of the Town Attorney Zoning Board of Appeals was held on March 16, 2021. A regular meeting of the Town Attorney Zoning Board, yes, it was held via Zoom. Present was Nico Juarez, Chairman, Pat Hawker, Richard Norton, Steve Weston, Jim Agar, and Steve Stewart, the alternate, was also present. There are three members from the public, as well as myself, Crystal Weston, the town clerk. The meeting was opened at 7:30 PM, following the Pledge of Allegiance. There was no correspondence. Resolution Three, on motion by Norton, seconded by Agar, the following resolution was adopted to accept the March 8 minutes of 2021. New business Kathy and Tom Michelle, 42 School Street, Marysburg, New York, SBL 14-1-7.2. Chairman read the response and the town attorney. Chairman Nico has recused himself at this time. The first part of the secret was completed by the CBA board. Resolution Four, on motion by Norton, seconded by Agar, the following resolution was adopted to accept Part One of the secret, for Kathy and Tom Michelle. The applicant would like to install an accessory building on her property on Cackle Town Road for cold storage in the general residential district, which is not allowed. The building would be used to store work equipment. This is cold storage, only no heat or electric. Resolution Five, on motion by Norton, seconded by Hawker, the following resolution was adopted to accept the secret. Use variance criteria was reviewed. The applicant will need to send out certified return receipt letters to all neighbors within 500 feet of the property. Public hearing has been set for April 12 at 7:20 PM for a use variance. There being no other board or public comment, on motion by Weston, seconded by Norton, the meeting was closed at 7:39 PM. Respectfully submitted from Amy Loman, Board Clerk.
Thank you, Crystal. You have, just by the way, our regular... Amy is up, so Crystal's up. I'm sorry, Jocelyn is taking minutes for the meeting this evening. I...
Accept your minutes.
Yeah, I know, but I wanted to... Or the... I do want to accept them, except I wanted to make a point with the meeting minutes. And that was in terms of the secret that was submitted, we discussed earlier today, that we need to...
Now, that'll be something that they'll handle during your business.
Okay. Can I get a motion to accept the minutes from 316, please? Okay, all those in favor? Rich, Pat?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Steve? Can you get Steve's?
He's here.
Okay, Steve accepts the minutes.
He's trying to accept the minutes. Hold on. Go ahead, Steve.
Keep doing it. I accept the minute.
Thank you, Steve. All right, so to all business, we have Kathleen and Thomas Michelle with TaxMap ID 14-1-7.2. At this point, I will also recuse myself and leave it to Rich Norton. And I will also bring in Stephen Stewart to make the point. He's here.
And Ken, would you like to sit at the table? Yes, please.
Thank you, Ken.
I love how my kids are in there.
For all business, one of the things that we personally want to address...
Rich, if you could please speak a little louder.
One of the things that we want to address is to take back the resolutions for setting the Part One secret and Part Seven secret. We now have a new secret introduced.
Before you go toward it, Mr. Mogul pointed something out to me. It may not be appropriate for Mr. Stewart to participate because apparently he has an attorney-client relationship with Mr. Mogul in another matter. So, you know, it's probably not a good idea for someone who's advocating a position, you know, just too... I think it's closing the connection for you participating. You have a form without...
I respectfully disagree. Yes, Mr. Mogul is my attorney and a matter manager. And I do believe that each of us have a second to leave that matter.
Well, I can't force you to refuse yourself, but I'm putting it out there. So that's okay. If you want to participate, you can so with your own...
Just, just to the record, I don't object to Mr. Stewart sitting there. But, you know, obviously, that's a call for Mr. Stewart and for counsel.
Right, this is about Kathy and Tom Michelle, request for a use variance. I had a quick question for Kathy. And that question is, do we have a written denial by code enforcement for the application for this building?
Rich, I'm having trouble hearing you. Sounds very muffled. What was the question?
The question was, do you have a written denial by the code enforcement for this building?
No, because I didn't even apply. When I looked into it, you know, it was said that there has to be a primary structure first. He said that to take it to the Zoning Board of Appeals. So, yeah, I couldn't even apply for the building.
Technically, she could apply and permit the application should be denied because it wouldn't conform with zoning. Well, that's a jurisdictional issue. And technically, this is not associated with either a subdivision, appendage subdivision application, or appendage site plan application for the planning board where there's an exception. So theoretically, there is supposed to be, you know, a jurisdictional basis to get before the CBA, which would be an application to the code enforcement officer and an action by the code enforcement officer that the applicant would have been agreed by, such as a denial of the permit.
I agree. The law specifically states that this is an appellate award. And the avenue to come before the Board of Appeals is to have a building permit request denied by code enforcement officer and reason given in writing what the denial is based on code. And that's the other thing we can hear on it, is zoning code. We can't hear... We're going to fix denied on construction or building code issues. You can't rule on that. But this is a zoning matter. And that's where the Zoning Board of Appeals sits. I would respectfully suggest that, Kathy, you do not have legal standing at this point for this board to bring a use variance because you have not filed a permit. And therefore, there was no denial. So I think that's true, and I don't know how we continue with this.
Well, I mean, it would just be another ground for someone who's disenchanted with whatever decision on the merits of the application might be, would be another ground for challenge of that decision. The lack of the initial jurisdiction. So, I mean, the safest prospect would be, and it's going to make more work because you're going to be right back here again, probably in another month or maybe two at the most, where the applicant goes to the code enforcement officer, makes the application, the application will be denied. The appeal would be resubmitted, you know, and we start over again. That's where it would go.
And that would be fine because at least then there would be solid legal ground to have, bring that appeal forward.
I don't disagree with you.
Would we... So I think what we're saying is that this application is not complete without the written denial from the code enforcement.
It's not a question of the application being complete. It's a question of whether the board has actual jurisdiction to entertain the appeal because there's nothing to appeal from at this point. There's been no denial of the building. I mean, it's a technical argument, but it's a legitimate technical argument. That's surprising.
So what is the board's process now?
Well, what the board could do is the board could deny the application on the basis of the lack of jurisdiction, which would be without prejudice to the shells going forward with a building permit application to code enforcement officer. And then once the code enforcement officer makes his determination, you go from there. If he grants the permit, I think you're going to hear from Mr. Mogul and his clients, an appeal from that determination. If he denies the permit, then the shells would be in a position to come back and be heard on the merits of their application.
I think that we should probably deny this. That permit. And have the situation approved or file the application complete to go to the code enforcement and get it denied so that you can go forward. I would like that, Michael. A second.
So I got to talk a little louder.
So I guess at this point, we're...
Do you still need to do the vote a little louder? I know, it is. I told you it was going to be.
All right, so the motion is out there. We have a vote on the motion. Jim? Jim?
As far as...
Deny this?
Yeah, I vote to deny.
Steve Stewart, I vote to deny. Rich Norton, vote to deny.
Steve Weston?
Yes, I vote to deny.
And do you want to continue on with your other item for this? Just...
I think that you can come back and get the rest of these.
Okay.
Thank you very much. All right. Thank you, everybody.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. I, you know, some of the people are very muffled. So they voted to deny. What was denied? The application or...? I'm not sure what was denied.
We have to take the deny without prejudice. So you were to make another application that you actually deny.
In writing?
An application that you deny.
By the code enforcement.
Okay, so why didn't the... Why did the zoning board let me go this far without telling me that? We went through the last meeting, and then I had to send letters out. They did all this work, and nobody said that there had to be a written denial. I think that the board should have notified me of that long before this point.
I think that this just came to our attention.
Can't hear you.
I think this just came to our attention.
All right.
Recognized, thank you totally.
Okay, was that the town attorney that was present there?
Yes, this is the town attorney.
That's the town attorney, okay. Well, there was one, you know, a couple things there. The one, he was talking about pods, portable on-demand storage.
I was... It's probably, that was a...
Right. Right, well, pods are not... The pods are not allowed, but shipping containers are.
That was Steve Mogul that was returning. They said that. And I think that we are not really taking his comments. That's what we do.
Okay, so that was not the town attorney? Oh, okay.
Okay, I put her on mute. Just explain to her that we're moving on to the next.
Now, we're moving on to the next point of business. Is it new business?
Yes, you're moving on to new business.
Okay, new business. Can everybody hear me fine? Mr. Bosch, hello.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm very good. Just a moment. We have here TaxMap ID number 3.1-29. He is requesting an area variance. Mr. Bosch, would you please come up and tell us what you're going to submit?
Hello, everybody.
And speak loudly, please.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for having me. My name is Zenon Bosch. I own property here in Marysburg at 55 William James Road, to be specific. I'm here because I'd like to obtain permission for finding your old buildings to erect old-style buildings on my property. But after I met Mr. Jim Crowley, the code enforcement officer, he said that as per definition, the proposed location is in the front yard.
Okay.
And he instructed me to submit the area variance application, which I did, has been submitted previously. And according to Mr. Crowley, there is no legitimate reason to object it. I brought the plot plans,
which I have after I did the survey,
without and with the new location.
Just stick them over here.
I can take them for you.
Speaker, okay.
Yeah, thank you.
I have two sets here.
Sure, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And there's also a picture taken with my Joan, who showed exactly how the place looks like.
Thank you. And how many copies? Two?
I have three and three. Three original copies from the survey and three copies showing the new location. And it's actually to scale. This one, you're looking at is...
I've seen this. I just want to see the new stuff, too. Thank you.
Those are three the same. That's correct.
So just pass one.
I have three and three. Three original without the difference and three showing the new building.
Those are both the same, but... So Jen can share and take a chair. There's only two different maps, one, two, four, one...
Yes, it's put in the maps. Three copies and three colors.
You have that on there. If you hand me your stack, I'll show you.
And may I say something? On those maps, it's shown the existing garage, which was already there when I purchased the property. This is correct. And the new building, it's actually not visible from my property because it's behind the garage and behind line of trees. This is the... This is my house. This is where the garage is existing. And this is where I'd like to install the new one. So the gold front yard doesn't have anything. It's nothing in the front of the building. It's actually... The proposed location is behind the existing garage, behind the line of trees. It's like an open, nice spot, which is like perfect for another search. And what I'd like to add...
Is that right, 20, almost 21?
So you said 20 meters? That's 20, or eight, yes.
Okay.
The whole property.
So how many feet essentially in front of your house with this being?
From my house to the...
If you draw a line, how many feet?
I show those dimensions on the drawing. I'll show the dimensions on the drawing. On the big drawing, sir, from the existing garage, I show the dimensions in feet.
Do you need a zoning law here anywhere? Would you?
Yes, this is the... I can hear you, sir.
Where's the...
This is the front of the building.
This is the part here.
Where? Just in the...
This is the front of the building. That's correct. The one on the yellow is the existing garage. And the one with the dimensions is the new proposed location for the new building. And I also like to add that the new building is not going to be visible from my house because of the garage and line of trees. It's not going to be visible to any of the neighbors because of the line of trees.
Upstairs.
It's really far away. And like I mentioned, it's a line of trees, so you can't even see it.
Do you mind? Okay, you know where it is, right?
But...
On my shelf, the blue one.
Talk about going to the code enforcement office. Did you apply for a building permit? Did you deny your application for the...
The application for the permit that was settled by the company I have the franchise with, Pioneer Full Buildings. I think it was denied. After that, I have met Mr. Crowley, the code enforcement officer. And after that, we submit the area variance application to the board.
I think the CBA needs a copy of the denial from the code enforcement.
I have not received anything.
Can you check with whoever the company is that you hired that submitted the application? Maybe it went to that.
I spoke to them a few days ago. They have not received anything.
Is that something that we can receive before the public hearing?
You should, because it's kind of hard to go forward without...
So we can make sure. It may still be... I know there's been a lot of backup and building here and there. We can make sure that we can obtain that.
Mr. Crowley mentioned that to him, everything is straightforward. There is no legitimate reason for any...
Are you trying to find?
And...
You still get your public hearing. You still get your public hearing. We can still set a public hearing free, but you have 30 days to get that denied.
So what's going to be the next step? I'm kind of confused.
Yep. The next step would be... So if you don't have a denial, that company that you said that you're working with...
They have not received anything.
And you'll have to go to Crowley and ask him for, you know, a legitimate denial.
Mr. Crowley gave me the whole package back with the area variance application.
Yep.
And then I filled out the application and I submit the whole package back to zoning board.
I think he effectively denied it, but he didn't actually give you something in writing to say.
I have not received anything in writing.
Yeah, you need to get that from him.
Thanks.
He needs to memorialize that in writing. Okay, just as a procedural matter.
So the next step is going to be to get in touch with Mr. Crowley and get something written, the denial.
Crystal, when is he in the office?
Tomorrow. I can, I will reach out to him tomorrow morning. And we will take care of that. And I'll make sure that you receive a copy of that.
Because the other question I've got, just because if I'm understanding this correctly, the reason why he's asking the variance is because this garage is supposedly being placed in the front yard of the property. I'm not sure what the front yard of this property is because according to the way, what how the code defines it, you have the front lot lines, the lines separating the lot from the street.
Right, and this is 52? Is this, or is this William...
This is...
William Haynes Road.
William Dean Road. It's a private...
So technically, we would consider this the front of the house.
That's what I'm wondering, if that... Right, it's the front of the house. Right, he's not proposing to put it in the front yard.
Right, he's proposing to put it... If you were to consider... I figured the same thing because it's on the... You've got to start from the zero. There's a zero, and a zero is a street. This is our street. Otherwise, where's the zero? You know, we would consider this a zero, and this would be the front of the house. Even though your house would be rotated, and you've come into here, it's considered the front because of the road.
Yeah, the... Yeah, the code, the zoning law doesn't define the front as being where the picture window is.
Right.
Or the front, or what you might perceive to be the front door. The zoning law defines the front line as being the street.
Correct.
So if that's the street. Then the, then the area between the house and, and this is the front yard. That's not in the front yard.
So like you want to know. Right. What I remember from the conversation, I was told that whatever the main entrance is. And if you draw a line through the building wall with the main entrance, everything in the front is going to be considered to a front yard. Now the question is.
That's not what the zoning law says. It's a street.
It's guarding from the street.
So in this case, if.
Because, I mean, you know, the street could be here. You could have a hell of a view on this side of the property. And you want that to be what effectively might be the front of the building with windows and that you're looking at. But as far as the zone, the zoning law is concerned, this is the front line of the property. This is the street. And that's the front yard. This is a side yard. This is a side yard. This is the rear yard.
Ken.
It's also better to determine that with.
And I also like to point out that the existing structures, they're already kind of right between the main building and the proposed location.
Um, I just, real quick, Crystal West in town clerk, I did speak with Mr. Crowley. He was going to attend the meeting this evening. To help with this. I know he had family feelings. However, he did say that from his interpretation of the maps and the zoning law, the position at, to which. Actually, all of the upcoming area variances buildings are, from his understanding, that is the front yard. That is what he said. That is his interpretation, that he did say to me this evening.
Yep.
And he wanted me to reiterate that to you.
Okay.
So. That's where the confusion is.
It might be interpretation.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's, so instead of, you know, that's the question. Ultimately, your determination might not be the balancing test on the area variance. Determination might be that.
Where does it start?
The code enforcement officer's interpretation is not.
Right.
The direct interpretation.
Right.
But I think he ought to, you know, I think he's entitled to be heard too, as to why.
Absolutely.
What his calculus was in coming to that conclusion.
Absolutely. Yeah, and unfortunately, he couldn't make it. So, well, we can still set a public hearing and get these things answered. By May 10th. I feel. That's 30 days from now.
Or, or that, that causes him to infer an expense that might not be necessary until we get.
Who to have an expense? Okay.
The applicant.
Right.
He's paying for the mailing to.
He's got to, he's got to do the mailing.
He's going to take.
So what are you concluding? That we don't set a public hearing?
No, I'm just asking a point of clarification. Do we want to clarify it first? And then set the public hearing? Because if we clarify it and he doesn't need a variance.
Right. We did this before though, where we tentatively set a public hearing and it dissolved because it was unnecessary.
But in the meantime, he still has to send out.
If you're going to set a public hearing, he's going to have to mail out the notices, their certified mail.
And they have to.
They're probably running $6 or $7 a file. I don't know what any of you have to do. You're going to have to publish in the newspaper. That's going to be.
I was going to say, what if we can have this answer tomorrow?
And I could reach out to him, you know, by late this week.
Yeah.
You know, just, I just want to get the ball rolling.
I mean, you can tentatively do it, but we've got enough time. You don't like to publish and send the mailing.
Correct. So we can prepare for both situations and tomorrow, we should have a better answer.
He's also subject to 239.
Because he's.
Because he's within the, well, it's just what it said on the map.
Okay. So, I mean, you know, there's a 500 feet from a certain, whether it's a state highway, county highway.
I think it's more than that. The closest state road is maybe 52.
The lot itself has to be within 500 feet of one of the things that triggers the 239 review.
Well, 52 runs basically. Well, five hundred is, is somewhat parallel.
It's actually going in an angle. It's like 45 degrees.
But it's like, like, there's five hundred. 52 is like.
Over here?
Like right in here.
Okay, show the board idea. From Google Maps.
All I know is I looked at, we've got a map upstairs at the termins. You know, subject for 239. I'm just going to send it anyway, just, you know. Just for the wanting to review and they may say that it's exempt, but I just want to get the ball rolling so that you can get your garage in. If Crowley can tell us, going to see your position.
Mr. Dicker, right?
Yep.
This is the house. I'm going to enlarge it. This is the existing garage and right behind the garage, behind the line of trees, this is the location that I like to use for the building. Now, 252 is going, it's pointing in angle. And over here, it's, it's, I never measure it, but it's, it's far. It's far. This neighbor, this is the closest neighbor and is separated by the line of trees. You can't even see it. Now the. And the other one, it's 25. It's so many trees.
So I think what we're going to do is we're, we're going to set a public hearing for May 10th. Let me make sure it's actually correct. I had you down for. You're the first one. No, I made it earlier, actually. How, okay, so how is 6:20 for a public hearing for Mr. Bosch?
You need more than next month?
6, sorry, 6:20 PM?
Oh.
Uh, May 10th.
I thought you were talking about the month.
I want to start a little early because we have a few other people that I just want to make sure they have enough time for public hearing for everybody. 6:00, phone number. May 10th, Monday. Now, we'll get an answer from, we'll get an interpretation.
Yes.
Really.
Yes.
Jim tomorrow. As early as tomorrow. And I can reach out to you.
You have phone number?
I do. And then at least we have that set for you. And if you don't need to, then we just dissolve it and you just, you know, we'll let you know.
Okay. So. Once again, tomorrow, should I get in touch with Mr. Crowley and?
I will reach out to him and I will call you.
Okay.
For the answer. After I get a hold of him, so some of you can tomorrow.
So once again, maybe this isn't the front yard, correct?
That's what we're figuring it out. I want to know what he was thinking.
If the front is facing the closer county road, which in this case is going to be Route 52. So then the proposed location is actually on the side of the building. It's not in the front of the building.
That's true.
So maybe we don't have to go to the.
Either way, even if it's from 52, this building, James Road goes along here.
That's right, but it's only, goes only to my property.
Yeah, we understand that, but if our interpretation of those law, the rule is from the road. Then it's from here, not your driveway. So that's what we need to clear up.
Okay.
We're speaking with the guy, see what his thoughts are.
Okay.
Um, okay, so also a question for Ken, then. I would consider tabling this. Is that, is that what we're, would we start the seeker part one tonight? Or can we do that during the public hearing in the event that he has to?
We had to do it during the public hearing. You can either do it, you can either do it tonight or you could do it right after the public hearing. If it's a 239, we do have a part one completed by him, yeah?
Yes, we do.
So because you need, if you're, if you're going to send this to the county.
We need that.
You're going to need, they're going to need a complete copy of the application to the part one.
Um, double check that you signed it. Actually, that's probably the next question. Just getting this right over to.
Now, this is, now, let's, let's, let's back up a second on the seeker because he's only looking for a single variance from a, from a. From a setback. Now, under the seeker reg.
Let's see if it's signed.
I think this is, I think that would be a type 2 action, which is, which is not subject to seeker. The reason why I say that is. 617 dot 5. 617 dot 5C. 17. I'm sorry, 16. Granting of individual setback and lot line variances adjustment are type 2 actions under the seeker regulation. Which means that they are not subject to seeker review. As a type 2 action. So you don't need, you don't need to declare yourself lead agency. You don't, you're classified as a type 2 action. And you move, and you move forward from there as far as seeker is concerned.
Okay.
He's only asking, his application, if it turns out Mr. Crowley's interpretation of what the front line of this property is is correct. Then he's looking for a single setback variance and that's, or an area or a lot. If you want a variance, it's a type 2 action. He doesn't need to be, we are not subject to seeker.
Okay.
We don't have to go, we don't have to analyze a part one. We don't have to complete a part two or a part three. We don't have to issue a negative declaration or a positive declaration. Seeker's over as soon as we decide it's a type 2 action.
Got it.
Okay.
Okay. And then lastly, do we need to determine the, in the event that, you know, Crowley's interpretation is correct? Do we need to determine the actual distance? What's the distance variance he's looking for?
Well, we need to know that.
Yes.
We got to, we got to know what.
And who's going to tell us that?
Well, the zoning law is going to tell you what the applicable setback is.
Sure. And it's 50, I believe, is 50.
I don't know. I don't have the, I don't have the scheduled uses for that particular district.
But we need to have that for.
We have, we need to analyze that, yes.
What his variance.
Because if you're going to grant relief, you have to specify what that relief is.
Right. Yep, okay.
I mean, he's got a map here that shows where he plans on building the thing and he's got, and he's got, you know, the distances all marked out from the different property line. So we need to look at that in conjunction with what the zoning law says the applicable setback is. We're building in that location and that's, and that's how we determine what the major extent of the variance is. But his application really should set that forth.
That's what I was saying. So in order for me to send this in, I just want to make sure I have that number.
Right.
Before I send it to the county because they're going to ask me.
What's on his application?
It doesn't have, yeah, it doesn't have. What?
The typical setback in that district is the front yard is 50 feet.
50 feet, yes.
The front yard is 50 feet.
They used three copies. I mean.
Narrow, yeah?
Yeah. I mean.
If that's the, well, that's the front. I mean, and it's not, if, if the conclusion is that that is the front of the lot, that's the front lot line. Then unless he's too close to the rear.
Which this says 120.
And it's, and it's shortest distance is 120 feet, so he's not too close to the rear.
Right.
If that's the rear line.
Right.
So I think, I think we need, we really need to come to terms with what is the front line of this lot.
Okay.
So we can, so we can then determine what.
I just want to make sure to put in, into his application for the county, seeing how many feet of a variance he's looking for. That's all. And I want to get that answer.
I'd just like to mention that the entrance is in both sides. On this side and on this side facing the road to the process road.
Okay. Okay, I think, uh, make sure that. I feel though we can do the, it doesn't, it doesn't trigger seeker, so. Right, in this moment, we're going to table this, get the answer. I'll call you. And if we still need to go through and you're going to go through public hearing, I need you to start the certified return receipts. Didn't I already talk to you about that? And no, somebody else. So your job is to contact all your own, all of your owners, all your neighbors that are within 500 feet of your, of your lot. And, and, and tell them where, what the public hearing, when the public hearing is. And I have a sheet for you that, you know, a letter that you can follow that you're going to tell all of your neighbors. So they're aware of the public hearing so they can come, like.
So that's going to be to understand clearly. So from my property line, within 500 feet to their house?
No, the property line. Everything that touches your 20 acres, any neighbors that touch your 20 acres within 500 feet. Need to be informed. About this public hearing, May 10th.
I'm not sure if I understand that correctly.
Anybody that's 500 feet from here. Here, here.
This is your whole property, right? This is your whole property. So from. Anybody, anybody's property that actually connects. Has to.
It's not the, it's not from the property line to the building. It's.
Right, it's from the property line out. 500 feet.
We don't have to do that. Um, what's that? Yep.
First.
Yep, yep. I'm just tentatively telling you what you may have to do.
Okay.
Okay.
But hopefully tomorrow, after we get in touch with Mr. Crowley, we're going to establish that this is the.
Correct. Let's hope so. It would be easy for you. That's true. Yeah, I would. So I just want to clarify, we're not tabling this, but we're going to set the public hearing. And I will reach out to you in the next few days. We're not, we are not tabling this for record. May 10th is your public hearing at 6:20. All right, guys, can you pull these up? All right. Yep. Thank you.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Yep, thank you very much.
Thanks for the watch. Thank you. Good night.
Yeah. Okay. On to the next, Brent Martinez. Mr. Martinez.
How you doing?
Hey, how's it going?
Going good.
All right. Long night.
Long night. It's okay.
I don't see you on video.
Hold on, that's because I.
Just a moment. He's got. There he is.
Hi.
Hey.
How's it going?
Oh, you know. Okay, so we have here tax map ID number 6 dot A dash 1 dash 8. Mr. Martinez is asking for an area variance. Mr. Martinez, will you tell us what you're submitting?
Yeah, I, I'm submitting an area variance similar to others. I'm trying to put, I would like to put a 12 by 24 foot garage. To the side of my house. I had Jim Crowley come out and look. I have a permit for the basement in my house that I'm working on right now. And I showed him where I wanted to put the garage. He said it's in front of the property line. It's considered the front yard. It's about, you know, it's over 100 feet from the road. It's not visible from any, any neighbors. It's a seven acre lot. The front yard of my house is, I would say, a, you know, a solid half acre. So, yeah.
I think so.
Uh, it says 24 by 24 there, but when I, what I measured in the area, I think I'm only going to really have room for a 12 by 24. I'm just needing a place to put.
Yeah, we're, we're on the.
Is there a drawing?
There should be a, I wrote an X on where I'm putting it. On the property. I'm going to Tough Shed to just get a pre-fob garage barn that's painted the same color as the house.
Was it in? We're on X, more or less, saying kind of where the zero is. Right here. We forgot an X on one of these maps. I'm just, I'm just drawing an X on.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yeah, so when you're driving down the driveway and then you, you, you take a left and it's, it's to the side of the house. It's not in front, but.
Oh. Wait, okay, so let me, let me ask you a question. Brent, that, look at your driveway. It's kind of dogleg. It looks like the side.
Yeah, I had Jim Crowley on site and he, he, he basically stood in front of my house, put his arms out and said, anything in front of this line right here is considered the front yard. And when he did that. And when he did that, you know, if I'm standing on my front porch, the garage is to the right, all the way to the side. It's like, you know, solid thirty, forty feet to the right of my house.
You already have, you already have an existing garage?
No, I do not.
Well, okay. So, so it's about. Yep. By what, twenty feet?
Everything from here, right at the side, that touches the property again. Okay.
Yeah, so another.
So it doesn't matter. The front.
So if you consider that before the porch is out, do you stand on the porch?